Hello, everyone. Welcome back to a very different type of episode of Dadcast. Normally, we talk to dads and we talk about their lives and their journey, et cetera, et cetera. But with the divisive issues going on in the world today, and especially here where we live in Southern Oregon, we've decided to open up our platform to discuss some controversial topics. And with that being said, welcome, Mr. Nick Martin, my co-host.
How are you, sir?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm good, man. And our esteemed Josephine County Commissioner here in Southern Oregon, Mr. Herman Bertschiger. How are you, sir? Oh.
There he is. Hey, I'm doing good and you're still talking to a dad, man. I got three sons, two grandsons and a granddaughter. So you're still talking to a dad.
Of course. And now we didn't want to leave that out. I just, you know, normally this show is all about talking the journey that is fatherhood. So with that being said, Herman, before I hand over the conch to Nick, we would love to have you on the show to discuss just that at another time in the future to discuss your journey as father, if you're in for that.
Sure, that'd be great.
All right, all right, all right, Mr. Nick Martin. Here we go, buddy.
All right, yours. Herman, first, I want to thank you so much for accepting to come on and do this interview. I do realize that going back and forth on social media, tone can be taken differently. Stuff can be taken out of context. It's so much better to do this in person and have an open conversation and keep it as we need to keep it as respectful as possible. And I, we're probably not going to agree on everything and that's fine. That's, you know, we're humans. That's, that's what life is about. So first question I have is, you know, we are dealing with something crazy in Josephine and Jackson County that I don't think in my lifetime I've never seen. I'm 41 years old and I've never gone through anything like this. So how big of a crisis are we going through right now? Like, how bad is this really? You're, you obviously see things on a different level than I see them, so.
Well, if you look at the projections, this spike, the projections are making it look pretty, pretty bad. And you know, you gotta, you gotta prepare based on projections and then keep your fingers crossed that we don't make the meet those projections. You know, when COVID first started and I was the Senate Minority Leader, I was at the high level conversations with the governor and stuff like that. And the, the initial projections here in Oregon just knock you out of your chair. Now thankfully, we not even came close to that and I'm thankful for that, very thankful. But you can't discount that we are seeing a spike here in Josephine County. We are having a trouble trying to figure out where this thing is coming from. You know, we got contact tracers that are working on, you know, how, who's spreading it? Why is it spreading? And, and I just don't have any information to share with you on that because we were kind of puzzled. We're all kind of puzzled. There's, it's not like you can point to an event or something like that, you know? So we're, we're a little bit puzzled there, but we are seeing an increase in folks that are getting sick. And you know, the hospital, you have to remember, a hospital isn't a facility that sits empty all the time waiting for an epidemic. A hospital likes to run it somewhere around 85% capacity. So then when we do get into these pandemics, I'm gonna, you know, our epidemic or whatever you definition you want to put on it, it overwhelms the hospital pretty fast. So they're already at 85% doing their normal stuff. And then boom, you hit them with this and they're, they're overrun. So that's probably my biggest fear right now.
Okay, so talking about the number situation and where it's coming from. So when Jackson County released the numbers from when they had their Jackson County Fair, they had 70,000 people in attendance and within eight days, they had 1,500 positive COVID tests. From talking to different healthcare professionals, there's probably another 3,000 to 5,000 people that had COVID symptoms that didn't go get tested. So we're talking like 6,500 people in Jackson County alone. Why would we not have canceled the Jack, the Josephine County Fair?
Or at least had a conversation about it.
Yeah, I mean, it just, it seems to make sense to me that we're gathering a lot of people and we're in a community that I, this is going to sound bad. We're in a community of people that are sick of masking up, sick of hearing about the vaccine, sick of hearing about COVID. So they're kind of out just doing whatever. And at this point, I think we needed to be a little bit safer. I mean, what are, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, you know, we had Boatnik back in Memorial and we, and we didn't see any spike because of the Boatnik festivities, which involve more people than the Josephine County Fair. So I think that's why, that's why we assumed that we would be okay with the Josephine County Fair based on what, what we, what happened during the Boatnik.
Yeah, but um, you know, the Jackson County Fair happened and then the COVID spike, this new variant happened after the Boatnik thing. So I think, I mean, was there even a conversation? Was there, you know, a thought of maybe we shouldn't do this? Maybe we shouldn't move forward with events for a few weeks, a month?
Well, there was a conversation, but boy, there's a lot of pushback. And I think you're right, you know, the people are getting tired of COVID and you can't, you can't, you can't say COVID doesn't exist. I'm tired of it, so I'm not going to pay attention anymore. But that is the pushback. But I think why we went forward with the fair is we didn't see it at Boatnik. And we, we didn't have the Jackson County spike. You know, we didn't have enough time to see that and it was already kind of playing, it's playing out why our fair was going. So I think, you know, that's the, that's the rationale. We didn't see it at Boatnik, so we figured, you know, why should we see it at the fair?
I'd like to add that I, for one, as well, I'm tired of it. I'm very tired of it. I'm sick of it, to be perfectly honest. It's all over the media, the commercials, but you know what I'm not sick of? The idea of losing my child. I, that, you know, if you want to say that that's fear, whatever the case, in my sole position on this earth is to protect my children. So I'm going to continue to be sick of it for the sake of my children and their health. You know, perfectly honest, and I wish more people here in Southern Oregon would take that stance and, and realize that, you know, maybe you don't have children, maybe you don't understand that. But you know, it's up to you, you have a responsibility with your freedoms to protect not only yourself, but the people around you. So anyway, that's my two cents on that, Nick.
No, you're, you're, listen, you're, you're, that is a perfect logical position. There's no question about it. I'm not saying that's like, I'm going to back up to my statement. People are sick of it, but you certainly can't discard that this is still a bad problem. See what I mean? You can't do that. It's just, you can't.
Are we, yeah, as the county commissioners, are you guys going to declare a state of emergency? So we can turn the pavilion at the fairgrounds into a makeshift hospital? Get the, the patients at the hospital that can't leave the hospital into the pavilion? So we have more emergency room is on the table?
Well, the, there is a, there's a statewide state of emergencies. So we don't have, that would just be redundant. We don't have to do that. We can, we've already offered the hospital many different things from the pavilion at the fairgrounds to the gym at the, at Grants Pass High School. We've offered to rent a motel complex for convalescent people, you know, for they're still convalescing. So all those things, we, the hospital doesn't seem to think we need that at this point, but all that stuff is on the table.
They don't seem to think we need it yet. They just ordered a refrigerated truck for Josephine County. That's wow.
Let's, let's lean down into that a little bit, okay? You gotta remember the morgue at the hospital is only three. Okay, and all right, and then if you add our funeral homes, that gets us up to about 50, okay? If you look at the historical death rate in Josephine County, it's about 3.5 per day. So far this year, it's only been about 2.9 per day. Now with the spike, it is up and we can't wait till we meet those capacities. We have to prepare if we're going to have more. Hopefully, we're not going to need this van, but if we need it, we want, we want it here. Does that make any sense?
That makes a lot of sense, yeah. More sense than what the, what I read on the news story. It's, so yeah, I mean, this, this is why we're having this conversation. This, this is good.
We're not spinning anything here. This is, is for.
No, no. Just straight. I want to understand, I want to understand why so many people attack you, why so many people attack the situation? Why so many people don't believe in, you know, the best way is, is what we're doing right now. Let's see, sorry, I've got a list of questions. I'm just going through.
That's what I'm here for.
Okay. Um, what is, this is kind of a, a big one. What's your stance on the sheriffs not enforcing the mask mandate and not enforcing the vaccine mandate?
It's not his job to enforce it, you know? And here, this is a difficult question and the whole COVID thing. And I, I hope we really get into this because there's, what makes this? So I kind of went back, why is the conversation about COVID vaccines? And this pandemic so much different than like smallpox or some of the other pandemic polio and stuff like that? And when you start grinding down into one thing is social media, they didn't have social media back then. Okay, they didn't have any of that. There is so much information out there. I had somebody come by my house and they're just like, you can't mandate vaccinations. This is going to sterilize all the women and all, you know? So people are getting all kinds of information off of the web. And all, what that does, that clouds the entire conversation.
Especially when.
They didn't have this. Yeah, right. Well, okay, so there's extremes to that. So then there's other conversations. I talked to two RNs that, that work at the hospital system. They're not going to get vaccinated and they went through a, a whole series of reasons why. And you know, this news, this new vaccine is RNA and it's not DNA. We don't know much about RNA. We know a lot about DNA. I don't even know what I'm talking about. I'm not a medical profession. I'm just trying to tell you what people are telling me. So the reason this conversation, I believe, is, is so difficult is all this information. Some of it, some of this information, people got good credentials that are saying certain things and people see that. Some of it is just like you say, it's so far out there, we need to load it up in a rocket and shoot it to Mars. So that's what's making this conversation so hard. Uh, and so from a commissioner's point of view, people say, you gotta get out there and lead and you gotta tell people, go get vaccinated. Well, those are the same people that keep telling me, I'm just a stupid old logger. So now the stupid old logger is going to stand on a stump and say, get vaccinated? Who the hell is going to believe me?
Right.
So that's why I've always said, since March of 2020, I have said, please have this conversation with your medical provider, not with a stupid old logger politician. Okay, have a medical, I don't know what your background health is. I don't know those things, you know? I know a person that has a very high allergic act, allergy to soy. And I guess there's something in the vaccine, so that individual has to be careful which vaccine they take. And so those conversations need to be with your medical provider, not county commissioner.
Right. I a hundred percent agree with you on that for sure. I also, I don't agree that we should be mandating the vaccine for, to keep your job. I think it should be kept at personal choice.
You know, so you know, those are, those are, let, let me hit on that a little bit. You know, I'm, I've studied government a lot and yeah, I'm a logger, but I don't think I'm a stupid old logger. This logger has been pretty well educated. And you know, when you study societies and you study, you have to remember that this experiment of freedom and liberty is only been for the last couple hundred years, 250 years. Before that, the entire population was tyranny and misery. You're either born into, into nobility or royalty, or you're a surfer or a peasant. And so because this is so new, this is a second in time when it comes to looking at the history of man, that I always have to keep liberty and freedom at the very top of the agenda. And, and America's always been for choices. That's part of that freedom and liberty. Is there some hardship? Is there pain and aching with that? Yes, but if you take liberty and freedom away and take it from the top, everything else falls apart. And so that's why, you know, I've always fell into that, have these conversations, educate yourself and then make a decision.
Okay, um, so kind of going back to, you know, the, the current situation we're in, it makes sense to me to have the commissioners kind of go out and make a statement of stay home, be safe. For the next three weeks, at least shut down all major events, you know, low, limit capacity at churches. This, it, from what I'm seeing and from talking to different medical professionals, there, there is evidence that there is a spread in gatherings. You go in, I'm seeing on Facebook all the time, people are testing positive for COVID. But two days prior, when they had their first symptoms, they're showing up for work. Or I had one guy that, you know, I know for sure, he tested positive for COVID. He went out to six different grocery stores to stock up on food right after he tested positive without a mask. So you know, we've got just irresponsibility happening in our community. We've got to figure out how to get people, and I know we're not going to be able to get everybody to be responsible, but I think if our county leaders are saying, hey, respect people that are wearing masks, be responsible, limit your trips, you know, watch church from home for three weeks. We just need to slow things down. I think that'll help out a little bit with the medical crisis. It'll help slow the spread of what we're having because for everything I'm seeing, it's, it's happening in gatherings. It's not just popping up out of nowhere.
Before you answer that question, Herman, I think part of the problem is we've been through that before, at least on a national scale. But obviously last year in the pandemic did not hit Oregon and Southern Oregon in particular quite as hard as we see the rest of the country. So we've lived through all of that and now when it's just smacking us right in the face and it's for real, it is in our communities. We've already been through it. What, why, why do through it again? Well, you should because.
You're absolutely right. But let's go back to, let's, let's go back. The reason we, when we, our health director first came in and said, hey, we're looking like we're going to have a spike. County commissioners, we said at every single meeting, if you don't have to go to the store today, if you can wait a few days, you know, and do all your shopping at once, do that. Be, be very careful about indoor gatherings. More and more doctors are saying that it's the indoor gatherings over a period of time is where the spread really comes. If you're walking down the sidewalk and you pass somebody, you're probably not going to get COVID. That's what the medical people are telling us. So we are saying that, we have been saying that. The problem is, is you're reading the courier. I mean, the courier does not put all this stuff and they interview us, we say it at every meeting. And unless you attend our meeting or go view it on, on Zoom or whatever, we've always said, look, be careful, be smart. If you don't have to go to these gatherings and it's like my parents, you know, my parents are elderly. I just, they live on a ranch in the apple gate. I said, mom and dad, just stay here. I said, if you need something from town, let me know, I'll bring it out. Okay, because they're in the age group that is really affected by COVID. So there's no reason why they should, and they do, they do church over Zoom. So they do, that's what they're probably doing is we're talking right now. So there's no reason, so just play, the more you can limit your exposure to those situations, the better it off it is for everybody right now. Okay, I know some of the people at the restaurants are going to beat me up that I said that, but that's just how it goes in politics. Somebody's all going to beat you up.
You can't make everybody happy. That's, that's the, that's the bad thing about being a leader. It's, you know, people are going to hate you or they're going to love you.
This is the big pick. Businesses don't want to shut back down again. I get it.
No.
Yeah, but what's the right thing to do?
COVID has been politicized and there's no question about it's been politicized by all parties. So probably a little more by the Democrats than the Republicans, but maybe I'm just biased. I don't know. But it has been politicized. I mean, I was really disgusted with Sean Hall's article in the paper calling out, oh, you know, Commissioner Bear Trigger didn't wear a mask at all times during the meeting. Well, hello, I was running the meeting and I don't wear a mask when I talk into a microphone. And guess what? I'm 15 feet away from the nearest person. So come on, Sean, give me a break.
Yeah, I mean, in your defense, Kate Brown doesn't wear a mask at all times when she's talking in meetings as well. So.
Yeah, like, like I said, we're, there's six people in the entire auditorium and I'm 15 feet away from the nearest person. Give me a break.
Yeah, so I know we're kind of jumping all over the place. My other concern, you know, being a parent and doing a lot of research on back to school, pretty much every school system in the country that's reopened has had some sort of COVID outbreak. I personally feel like we should hold off on starting school till like the middle of October, get through this spike, get our hospital back to normal levels. I mean, if anything happens other than COVID, you, your kid breaks his leg playing football, sports, somebody falls down in the hallway at school. Somebody gets in a car accident going to school. That's just more stuff that's going to the healthcare system that we don't need. Uh, is there a way to, I've reached out to Kurt Kolb, is there, is there a way to, you know, make that more known? I, I know the, the medical professional, I can't remember his name, said that they do have a plan for school and they do feel that it's safe. I just, you know, just seeing what I'm seeing and if we truly do hit the peak of the spike in the next two weeks, it's, it's going to get really, really bad. And if anything were to happen to any of my kids at school, that's, that's going to just, I'm not going to be happy.
Well, I'm going to defer that to Dr. Scott Nelson. He's the chief of staff at Asante and he's also the, the president of the, of Grants Pass School District. So he's probably in a lot better position to answer those questions than I am, Nick.
Okay. Remember, I'm just. How do you personally though, Herman, feel about it?
You know, I, I'm just, you know, you're going to call it deflect the question. When I look at the numbers, I'll, I'll drive you crazy because I'm a numbers guy, okay? I was on, I was the vice chair of the Senate, Senate Finance and Revenue Committee for eight years. And I look at numbers and when you look at, at illnesses, severe illnesses with that age group, it doesn't, you know, it's not zero, but you're never going to get to zero, but it's pretty low. And so I'm going to deflect whatever the, you know, Nelson seems to understand this a lot better than I do. And, you know, I don't even know what their plan is, so I can't even comment on it, you know, what, what their plan is.
Yeah, from what I understand, they still plan on opening September 7th and just kind of going as normal, which I don't know.
Let me tell you this, okay, and this is, this is fact. This is a fact and there's no, no playing around here. Jackson County, the Medford School District, they opened up last week. This last week was the first week of school. My, my lady, my mother's children is immune compromised. So we decided, you know what, we're going to play it safe. We're going to keep our kids home this week and see how things go. And I kid you not, Wednesday, three days into the school week, we get a letter and email from the school saying that a certain route, bus route, it turns out that there was someone on the bus and everyone has been, you know, around COVID. They have been exposed and found out that it was my kid's bus route in my neighborhood and we didn't put them on that bus, so we're good. But every single person on that route, 14 days quarantine, and that's the first week of school. So for anyone saying it's not happening, oh, it's happening. And we are just so lucky to dodge that particular bullet. Now granted, will we be able to dodge every bullet? Probably not, but it's happening. It's there and that's the first week.
Well, see, you did something that was smart and, and you know, we're not seeing the illness with the kids, but you bring it home and like in your situation, you have somebody has a compromised immune system, that could be deadly.
Yes.
So you were very smart in taking those extra precautions. But this is, you know, another thing, everybody always got to remember, we're on a learning curve with this whole COVID thing. This is all learning. It's, it's the, it's a new virus. It's a new way how we're handling it. It's new vaccines. I, I am really truly hoping that we have some breakthroughs in therapeutics too. I mean, we need to be building all these building blocks. This thing is crazy. It's just crazy. And, and because it's, because it was human altered, in other words, I, I, you know, like you go back to polio and smallpox and all those, you know, chickenpox and all that, those were diseases that were in, in nature that, that we had to deal with. The disease probably come out of a test tube somewhere. So man, there is so much learning that we're going to have and it's going to be interesting what history tells us about this in 50 years.
Have you, uh, have you gotten vaccinated?
Well, I'm not going to ask other people their health, their health information and I'm not going to disclose mine or my family's and, and, but I will tell you this much, I'm a non anti vaxxer. My wife and I, we made sure our kids were vaccinated and stuff like that. So do not paint me as the anti vaxxer, okay? Okay, I am a freedom of choice person. That is, that is what this kind of the foundation of this country. And I, I hope people use wisdom and make good choices.
Okay, fair enough. Just got to ask the, ask the questions.
Larry King over here asking the tough questions.
I know, throwing that one in there.
That's not a tough question.
Let's see. So you posted on Facebook the other day about the, the illegal immigrants in the pot farms. What, let's, let's talk a little bit about that. Um, and I, my, I know my, my response to that was probably taken the wrong way. So let's just, I want to clear that one up a little bit too. I do believe you. I, I agree that, that it's definitely become a problem. I don't think it's as big of a problem as what we're currently dealing with though. I think there, from what I've been told, in the hospital, there's less than 3% illegal immigrants right now. Just due to the fact that they, they don't seek healthcare because obviously they're not.
That's right. So we've had.
They're not spreading it though.
We, so let me back up. We, when, early in the season, you know, we've had two, and I'm going to call them undocumented people because they don't have any documents. They don't have no ID and they were dumped off in Cave Junction. One was dumped off at the Chevron station and by the time the ambulance got him to the hospital, he had expired. So then when we, the sheriff started doing these raids, we went out and Michael Weber, our health director, went out and we looked, you know, and listen, Nick, you can't believe what we're seeing. And if you ever want to come by the office, I'll show you some pictures. It's just unbelievable. It's, and so of course, the last, the last raid, there was over 300 of them. A hundred of them escaped. 200 of them were interviewed out of 295% didn't speak English or said they didn't speak English. I don't know which, you know, and, but the lit, what, what Michael Weber, our health director, he doesn't focus on the illegal marijuana stuff. He focuses on the living conditions. And when you look there, they are sleeping shoulder to shoulder in these makeshift big tents. And Weber looked at me because I'm more focused on the legal stuff going on and he, and he looks at me and he, you know, I mean, he's telling me, uh, it's not the working conditions I'm worried about, it's the living conditions. He says, if there's ever a way to have a super spreader event, this is it. Yeah, so on top of all that's going on in the county, what, that's all we need. See what I mean?
So when it makes sense to, I, it's going to be a hard, long process to solve the situation of either getting rid of the pot farms or, I don't know, whatever we need to do to, to figure that out. Would it make sense to get healthcare workers to go and test them? Just go out there and just do, hey, if you're going to do this, let's work together to not do a super spreader. We understand there's undocumented workers, but let's test everybody. If you have one positive case, you quarantine the entire pot farm. They don't need to leave. They, they can stay there and still work. And then that kind of solves the issue of them coming into town and spreading.
And it also, that's the case.
Right, exactly.
You gotta get past the AK-47s. You don't know, you have no idea how dangerous this is. The sheriff came, the sheriff came to me last week and says, on that raid out there, that 1,300 acre raid, 300 workers there, I forget, 180 hoop houses and everything. It took 250 law enforcement officers, two helicopters and an airplane over two weeks of planning to do it. And Dave told me, he says, if you don't buy me a armed vehicle or a armored vehicle, we're not doing this again. That's how dangerous, I can't go into a lot of the details, but when your sheriff says we were lucky.
Yeah.
And, and we've talked to OHA, I, I said to them, they, they said, well, you need to reach out to these people. I says, you know what, why don't you bring your little mobile vaccine clinic down here? And I'll give you about 1,200 addresses and you can go down the list. So we've got a big problem there and, and you're right. I, I'm worried about an outbreak in that community. I'm worried that they won't seek medical advice and it will get really bad.
Yeah, because that, that could be like catastrophic if that were to happen. Even if we get through this spike and then that happens as well, then yeah, it's, it's. Even if we get through this spike and then that happens as well, then yeah, it's, it's, it's not going to be good. Um, what about setting up like a, a vaccine site at the fairgrounds and make it?
We did that. We did it.
What about do it again? Like it's, I, I know we did it, that, that was back around the first.
No, no, we did it. We did it during the fair. We did it during the fair. Yeah. We figured there's 15,000 people came into the fair. We had a, a booth there, um, and we had signs and everything. We had 49 people out of 15,000.
Good Lord.
Yeah.
Uh, man, so frustrating.
I think it's part of the whole freedom and entitlement and freedom of choice thing. And I get it, a small percentage of people out there, it's not smart to get a vaccine. It's not, you know, it can hurt you. Like you mentioned earlier, the soy ingredient, but for the most part, my humble opinion, man, I, I'm vaccinated. I'm afraid to say it. I haven't turned into a zombie. I'm not unhealthy.
Just to encourage people. Go ahead, finish it. Be sorry.
And it's just more people got it. Uh, I, I just, and frustrated.
So my personal experience with the vaccine, I, I got COVID. I was in a car with JP. He was vaccinated. We were in the car for eight hours. I, JP did not get sick. I was around my in-laws who were vaccinated. They did not get sick. So after seeing that and realizing, okay, they should have gotten sick. I was, I was seriously sick. I got COVID really bad. Like two weeks I was in bed, like super bad. And everybody that was vaccinated around me did not get sick. After I saw that, I'm like, all right, there's something in this that makes sense. So I got vaccinated and it's, you know, that personal choice.
Well, from what I'm reading, you had COVID and you got vaccinated. You're like supposed to be armored. Okay? So I, and I hope that that is the truth. I just read that this morning. Um, there was a, you know, I'm always reading these studies, you know, and, but now here's the, now there's another, uh, side of that. Uh, Representative David Brock Smith, he was vaccinated twice and he was passed his 28 days and everything. He got COVID from somebody who was vaccinated. They got COVID. So, uh, and this is the, this, Nick, this is the problem we're having. The, if you, all you got to do is Google long enough and you'll find whatever you want.
It's crazy. Yeah. Like, I mean, even the thing with Brit, it's like, you know, you can get into Brit if you're vaccinated, but if you're not, you have to test it and have a negative, negative COVID test. But if you have a positive vaccinated COVID case, all those people are going to get COVID. So the whole thing with Brit doesn't make sense to me at all.
No, hence shut her down again. I know it's difficult. It sucks. It's nothing any of us want. But if it helps save lives, watch a concert on your TV at home, man.
Exactly.
There's plenty recorded. It's, I know, we don't want it.
Politics is a tough game and you're always trying to thread the needle on what, what, uh, the public opinion is, you know? And I mean, it's, it's just how it is. I've been doing this for quite a while and it's a tough game. And you know, you gotta kind of pile through the things and see what the public opinion and, you know, you always get a few real loud people, not saying that you dismiss what they say, but you, you know, what's the general consensus of the population? That's what you're doing. And they, and you're trying to make these right decisions based on all of those things. So it's tough. I, um, and then I think, I, I think there's a lot of antitrust of government. Just let's set COVID aside. Okay. Let's set that aside for a minute. Just look at the politics is crazy. When I first got into Senate, this is going to make you guys sad because it makes me sad. The first four or five years I was in the Senate, every bill that came to the floor for a vote was bipartisan. It means it had Republican, Democrat votes. That's all gone. It's gone. It's all gone. The hatred between the two parties, that's why I got out of the Senate. I got out because I just said, you can't, there's no more compromise. You can't even have a dialogue. You start talking about it. If it's, if you are not in full agreement of their position, alls they do is attack you. There's no more talking about it. There's no more compromise. There's none of that. It is. And so after this crazy election, with all of the cannon fodder and everything, I think people just don't trust government. And so now you can't even say anything and they, I don't trust you. I don't trust government. I don't trust it. I don't trust, I don't trust what Dr. Fauci's saying. I don't trust. I was amazed that Trump did a speech last, and, and listen, the Trump thing, don't, don't get sidetracked with that. I'm just saying, I watched him give a speech and when he said, I think you need to get vaccinated, he got booed.
Yeah, I saw that. Trump just turned on him.
Right. Okay. So put yourself in bear trigger's spot. I'm in a red county. Overwhelming conservative and everything. I posted, I just put a post up there referring people to the Josephine County website so they can get information on COVID, where to get vaccinated, or what other things you can do to minimize it. And I got blasted for that. So you've got, it's a crazy world out there. We are a divided country and it scares the hell out of me.
So my, my take on it is go at this as a parent. You've got to, as a parent, we have to make terrible decisions sometimes that our kids hate us for. They get over it. We're going to, the, the amount of people that are dying, the amount of people that are getting sick, I, I think this needs to be a point of just, you're, you guys are in charge. You have the power. Shut, shut everything down. Just, hey, this is what we have to do to save lives. You don't like it? Tough.
Actually, we don't have that as much power as you think we do. Okay? Um, so you got to remember, you still, everybody still has constitutional rights and everything. And, uh, we, we vetted a lot of things through our legal gurus and we have gotten legal advice on certain things. And you would be surprised, uh, how much little power we have over some of this stuff.
All right. Then who does have the power and what's the process to make that happen?
Yeah.
Well, nobody has the power for people to get vaccinated. Period.
Okay. Let's see the vaccination out of it. I, I think at this point for our communities, Josephine County, Jackson County, we need to shut down. We need to, no more Brit, no more fairgrounds, no more horse races, no more school for like three weeks. Three weeks will free up the hospital system. It's going to slow the amount of other cases going to the emergency room. Um, that, that's what I believe. And I, you know, if, if I were in a position of power, I would make that tough choice. And, you know, probably lose my position of power when it was all over. But, you know, I would sleep just fine at night knowing I saved lives and did the right thing.
And well, you'd also, you'd all, you'd also have so many lawsuits going on that, um, that I'm sure the courts would, uh, uh, grant stays and this and that, and it would be such a mess. So it's, it's crazy. It's crazy. Yeah. And then, you know, then all, all you need is one court ruling that says government can't do something and then it's all out the window. Okay. So we've, the best thing we can do is try to get people to do right. If you gotta go to the store, put on a mask. If you gotta go to Home Depot, you know, uh, put on a mask. But my family and us, we're pretty much stay out at the ranch. There's no, uh, we don't eat, we're not even going out to eat anymore. Yeah. I mean, that's just what we do.
Yeah. No, after seeing the amount of people that are showing up for work at restaurants right now with COVID, I, uh, yeah, I made that decision like, nope, not even getting food to go. Like it's scary.
No.
Yeah. So I mean, what about, you know, just going back to you, you, you know, we can't put in a ruling to say, hey, everything is shut down. What about going in and just, you know, making suggestions on Facebook, doing a video like what we're doing right now and be like, hey, the, just a suggestion, this, this could help. Slow down, limit your trips. That's one thing I, I haven't seen. I, I see that you posted the, the website. I see that you've posted the, the letter you wrote to Governor Brown about the pot farms. But I haven't seen an actual video from any of the commissioners just saying, hey, we need to slow down. We need to be responsible. We need to, don't push the vaccine. At this point, it's too late for that. At, at this point, we just need to slow down. That's, that's kind of where we're at.
Well, if you watch the commissioners meetings, at the end of all the meetings, the last thing on the agenda is matters from the commissioners. And we, and we all talk about, you know, what you, what the little things you can do to slow this spread down. Okay?
The best about that though, is most people watch a video for three minutes and then lose interest and go on to the next video. So I would say 90% of the people that are watching those meetings are not making it all the way to the end.
I'd venture to say that 95% of the community does not watch a county commissioner meeting. Yeah. I being one of those. So it kind of gets lost in loss.
Yeah. I mean, I honestly just started watching them just because of the stance that I'm taking and, you know, wanting to help and wanting to make a difference and.
Get out there, put it on Facebook. Do that.
Well, you gotta be careful, like I said with that too, because then you get blasted from the other side. And then all of a sudden that becomes louder than what you're trying to do. So you got, you know, it's, it's tough. You're trying, I'm trying to explain to you guys, neither one of you have been in politics. You're trying to thread this needle because if you go, if, if you do something too wrong, it gets so loud that that loudness, the loud, it's no longer the issue you're talking about. The attention goes to the loudness. Does that make sense? And, uh, that's how, yeah, well, it does. I wish I could say that, you know?
Thankfully, I'm not in politics and when it gets loud, I mean, I'll make a controversial statement and they, they attack. I don't care.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm all about protecting my kids.
We have a huge platform and, you know, if, if we say the wrong thing, yeah, we're going to get attacked. But at the end of the day, it's, who cares?
You're not elected though. Yeah. And if you're not, if you don't get elected, you can't do the right thing. Somebody else is in there. So.
That's it. You know, elected and you can do the right thing.
Well, that's your opinion. There's some peoples out there that have opinion. It's 180 degrees of yours. So who, what's, what's your opinion is better?
And the crazy thing, those people.
What's the points of getting elected? I don't get it.
Boy, you know, you're starting, you're starting to think like I do.
Yeah. Some of the crazy things I've seen too on Facebook are the people that were like, oh my God, don't get the vaccine. Don't trust the government. COVID's a joke. Somebody they knew got COVID and died and now they're all of a sudden, oh, go get vaccinated, wear a mask, don't go out. And it's, it's sad that it's come down to, it takes somebody that you know to die.
And also close minded Americans. I hate to break it to you, but this is not just happening in America. But everyone here in America who has the freedoms are now making a stand because it's my freedom of choice. And it is, don't get me wrong. It's your freedom of choice, but this problem is happening all over the world. It's not a US government conspiracy, people. This is.
Everywhere.
It's everywhere.
Yeah. I, I was on the phone for about two hours with my relatives in Australia. They live in a rural area, Australia. And, and, uh, Australia is coming apart at the seams because they've got mandate, absolute mandatory lockdowns in Sydney and Melbourne, where you're not allowed to leave your house unless you go direct to the store and back. And so now the huge protests in Sydney and Melbourne and, and, uh, now I guess the truckers are going to go on strike because they say you can't drive your truck over the border from one state to another unless you got a vaccine card. And Matt was just telling me, it's just absolute chaos. And he says it's Australian against Australian and it's, it's getting really violent. And, uh, I sure hope that's not a glimpse into our future.
It sounds like global civil war. That's, oh my gosh. That's crazy. Over what I, what I, what I feel and think is like obvious. This isn't. Anyway, yeah.
So here's another, here, here's another thing I'm, I'm a little worried about is this lush unemployment money is going to dry up this next month. And those, those people are going to have to return to the workplace or they're out of cash. See, right now, a lot of those people can stay home and they're not mixing as much. But that's all coming to an end here in, in September. And when they run out of money, they're going to need a job and they're going to want to go to work and they're back into that. I gotta go to work whether I'm sick or not. Think about that, guys.
We're going to have.
Think about that. Yeah. Yeah. Think about that.
Yeah. The whole thing is absolutely scary.
I have thought about it and you know what? Maybe they got the vaccine. It wouldn't be as dangerous. Maybe. I'd be just saying, maybe. Yeah. Scientifically, statistically, yeah.
But it's your choice.
And, and you know, even, uh, even the Johnson, Johnson vaccine, which is, is supposedly not as good as the rest. It wasn't, it's not supposed to prevent you from getting COVID. It's just if you get it, it's a lot less. Hey, have that conversation with your medical provider. If you're afraid of the new technology, maybe go to the old technology. I don't know. But, you know, give it some thought. You know what? People need to put at least a little bit of effort into the decision making.
Yeah. No, I've, uh, so I'm, I was an anti vaxxer. Like I completely against them. I, to make my decision, I actually met with a lot of different doctors, not just in Grants Pass, not just in Oregon. Every single doctor had the same exact thing to say about the vaccine, which helped to make my decision. So I, you know, it's just make the smart choice. Just definitely go seek medical advice. Don't make the decision on your own. Don't listen to the government.
For the love of God, don't take it off a Facebook meme.
Exactly. Yeah. So you know, you see me flying around Facebook. You know, I do that is I'm trying to get a sense of what people think. That's my job. That's the best way I can make decisions. I gotta get the conversation from everybody. And so that's why you see me. I'm one of the, I think I'm the only commissioner that's on Facebook. Yeah. And, and you know, and I'll, I'll post things on Facebook and, and I don't even agree with it. Okay? I just posted there and you'll see I type in there. This is an interesting read. I don't agree with it, but I want input from other people. I want other people to read it and then give me and what they think of it.
Oh, but Herman, you posted it. So of course that's what you believe.
I know. That's okay.
therein lies the problem. Maybe you need an asterisk every time you post. Disclosure, not necessarily my thought or opinion. I, you gotta click. We're going straight to idiocracy here. You need to clear things with people. You need to let them know. To, and even if you do that, they're still not going to take it. They're still going to think that's what you believe.
Uh, you know, you know, I asked Dr. Nelson, I, I asked him, I said, there's three viral, viralologists. I gotta have trouble with that word. Viralologists, one from Belgium, one from France and one from the US. And that's all I do is study viruses. In fact, the guy from France has a Nobel Peace Prize for his work he did on HIV.
Right. Literally their job.
Yeah, it's their job. And, and I just asked a question because that's what you learn in the Senate. In those committee hearings, you ask questions, you know, because you don't know. I don't know. So I said, should I discard what these people say? They have, they have some reservations on some of these vaccines. And now Dr. Nelson is a proctologist and he said, why should you listen for me to anybody from Belgium? And so after the end of the meeting, when I was walking back to my office, I was saying, you know, these are viralologists and that's all they do. And, and this guy is a proctologist. That's all he does. Yeah. So, so see how your head hurts?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, my car breaks down. I'm probably not going to go ask a radio DJ to fix it. I'm going to go to the professional mechanic.
Yeah, right. Okay. So, what, so going forward, do we have, do you have, do you guys have a plan? Like what, what, what steps are we going to take to get through this, the, the major part of the spike?
Well, the number one plan is shore up the hospital. Okay? Um, so that, and that's, it's working. I mean, that's the, the, bringing in a refrigerated van, that's part of it. It sounds gruesome and scary and all that stuff, but that's, hey, it's part of it. It's part of reality. Okay? Um, the other thing is, you know, the governor has mask mandates. They have them. Uh, the Oregon constitution really can't force the people to wear masks. You can suggest it. But you really can't enforce it. Most people don't realize that the only leverage the governor has is the workers in businesses, not the people that are going patronizing the businesses. There's, you cannot force them. Now the business can say, hey, get out of here if you don't have a mask because they can reserve. But as far as the state's, uh, ability to enforce anything, it's only through OSHA, through the workers. And that's, that's worker safety. Okay?
So with that real quick, um, how can you help the businesses enforce the mask mandate? I, one thing I've noticed going into Walmart, just example, yesterday, the lady, the greeter, um, was like, hey, you're not wearing a mask. You really need to mask up. And the person that went in without a mask mouthed off and said a whole bunch of things that were not very nice. And the lady cried like, how, how, how are they supposed to do their jobs if we have a bunch of people acting like that? Like, how can we help? Okay. How can you guys help?
Yeah. Good question. How?
So.
How? Yeah. We can't solve the homeless problem, you know, because there's some constitutional rights there. How? Yeah, we can't solve the homeless problem, you know, cuz there's some constitutional rights there. So, yeah, it's, it's tough. And the whole mass thing, you know, I, I mean, I've looked at all these mass studies and I believe that is a mask a hundred percent? No. Does it help? Yes. The help is in various degrees on what type of mask, do you use it correctly, blah, blah, blah. So you guys got beards and everything. And, and, and the mass studies say that don't work. So, I mean, it just depends. Now, does it help? Yeah, because it prevents spittle and stuff like that. But COVID is, is airborne. One doctor told me, he said, think of it as cigarette smoke. So you can see cigarette smoke, uh, when people are smoking. Think that's kind, think of that's how COVID, COVID smoke, even though it's invisible, that's how it is. So that's why when you're outside and you have air moving around, what happens to cigarette smoke? You don't see it. It's gone. That's kind of how, that's kind of a good way to, to kind of equate what's going on in COVID. So, um, do masks help? Yes. Are they a hundred percent? No, 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 they're not a, they're not a, they're not armor. They're not just it. And the N nineteen, when you look at all the different studies, N nineteen is probably the best, but it's, it's still, and the people with the hanker chat, handkerchief thing going on, forget it, leave it at home. But you find yourself a, a mask, you know, they don't work at all. So anyways, yeah, the, the, that's one thing I really looked at was the mass stuff a lot. And, uh, I, I believe they do help. But don't, it's not a guarantee.
But yeah, but and there's no way to help enforce this once the customer gets in the store though. That's, 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 that's the hard thing. It's like, I feel so bad for these store owners, the people that work at the stores. OSHA comes in, you know, I, up until about six months ago, I worked in retail and it was a nightmare. OSHA did come in, OSHA did find us because we could not control the customers that were not wearing a mask or refused to wear a mask. So it's, how do you help our local businesses with that? That's, you know, that's, if, you know, if we're, if our law enforcement's not gonna enforcement or help, you know, and then you've got OSHA finding them. That's another issue that they've gotta deal with, not only sick employees, but now they've got thousands of dollars in fines because they can't enforce a mask mandate because our local government doesn't wanna do anything. That's.
That's. Yeah, I, I don't, I think OSHA is more focused on the employees wearing masks than the customers, you know?
It's, it's, it's the customers. Like the business I worked for, we got fined because a customer was not wearing a mask. So, yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah, every employee was wearing a mask. We had one customer in the building that was not wearing a mask and refused to put the mask on. We asked them to leave. They bought their product and then they left. OSHA came back because another customer complained and called and we got a fine.
Well, our sheriff's department and even the city of Grants Pass Police Department, they, there's just no way. They don't have the resources to do it. They can't even do the job they have right now. When you talk about how many, when I look at the sheriff's office and how many calls go unresponded, I mean, we just don't, we just don't have the personnel. So you're not gonna get that out of the law enforcement. And so I, you know, I don't blame Dave for making that statement. He couldn't do it anyways. It's impossible. And then try to pass a levy in this, you know, for more, try to pass a levy in Josephine County for more law enforcement. Good luck with that.
Yeah, yeah, no, I've lived here my whole life. I, yeah, I totally understand that. So.
Right. So as far as resources and we can't use COVID money for that. And that's another thing, you know, that we got, the commissioners got chastised for turning down that COVID money. Well, the reason we turned it down is we have a whole bunch of COVID money we haven't even spent. And we look at it as this is taxpayer dollars and then there's strings attached to what you can use it for and not use it for and stuff. And so, uh, you know, our, our medical director says, you know, we're advertising on the radio, on TV, we're on YouTube commercials, which everybody hates. And, uh, we've got our website. You know, you can make an appointment. We will come to your house and give you a vaccine if that's what you want. I mean, I don't know what else we can do, guys. I just know what else we can do.
All right. Well, hey, man, thank you so much for taking the time out of your Sunday to do this. Um, I've, I've asked you all the questions I had. JP, do you have anything else?
No, man. Uh, I just really, really appreciate you, Herman, for, uh, taking the time and, and using your platform and, and using our platform to spread what I truly believe to be an honest, truthful conversation we just had. And, uh, we appreciate that, whether we agree or not. I, I kind of tend to think we agree on a lot and disagree on some, but you know, that's, that's, that's America and here we are, right?
Yeah.
Um, but thank you for, uh, thank you for taking the time.
Thank you so much. I'm glad we took this on Facebook and had the face to face and kind of a face to face. But, uh, yeah.
Well, I appreciate what you guys do and yeah, you know, everybody, there's a lot of things you can do to, to slow the spread of COVID. There just is, you know, and man, I, you know what, you wanna know what my biggest worry is? What's next?
Yeah, we don't know.
Yeah, what's next?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, you know, I've always said when I'm in the, when I was in the Senate, I was exposed to all these different issues and all that. And I said, and there were so many things I couldn't do anything about. And I'd always say, you know, I can't do much about it, but by God, I have a front row seat. And, uh, you know, it is, and I'm gonna go back to my original words, uh, that I said in the first week of March. It's, uh, the plague, the politics and the panic. And it, it, it's all of those. And take them all very seriously. I'm not saying that offhanded. It's a very serious conversation.
And we thank you for having that conversation. Uh, if you have any questions to anyone listening or watching this, comment below. We'll get back to you and if we can, we'll, we'll send those questions on to, uh, county commissioner. And thanks for coming on, man. We'll, uh, we hope, we hope this was educational for anyone watching. And we'll see you on the next episode, which will be considerably less lighthearted, I promise.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thanks guys. Take care. You too, man.